I call to order the August 7th, 2018, meeting of the Slayne County Board of Commissioners. I ask that you please silence your cellphones if you haven't already done so. Will Kirk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Okay, I ask that you please stand, join me in a flag salute, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time we'll have the public forum where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and items that are not on today's agenda. Seeing no one, we'll move on to regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second the motion.
Been moved and seconded that we approve today's agenda for the public forum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number two.
Approval of county commission minutes for July 31st, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of July 31st, 2018 as presented.
Second the motion.
Been moved and seconded that we accept the county commission minutes of July the 31st as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number three.
RFA number 174-18, bid award for project number 18-5374, Waterwell Road Bridge.
Says on my agenda that you have comments, Andrew or...
After we've removed it or before?
Excuse me.
Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I move to remove RFA 174-18 from the table for consideration and possible action.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we remove the item from, untable the item and put it back on the table for today's consideration. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Now, Andrew, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, staff recommends re-tableing RFA 174-18, bid award for the Waterwell Road Bridge project for future consideration, but before we proceed, I believe we have a couple of contractors in the audience that would like the opportunity to speak on this subject, if that would be all right.
I will take public comment at this time. And if you would state your name and address, we'd appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, I'm Kurt Mauer with L&M Contractors, at Great Bend.
Good morning.
Good morning. We'd submitted the low bid on the project and I understood, I was noticing on the minutes that it was tabled after recommendation, and so I was just here to address any concerns on anything that, there again, I had, really didn't have any idea why it was tabled, but I assumed there were some concerns, and so that's why I'm here.
Well, the concerns were from our legal department, I guess you would say, on some of the bids that were submitted. Further than that, I really can't comment at this time, so...
I see. Like I say, we, I submitted the low bid, I put dates on it, there was really no requirements on dates or times or anything, so what I did is put a date, usually, and that's what I've done in the past on the 10 or 12 other bridges that we've done, I usually put, you know, a earlier start date, so that way it allows for flexibility on when to start, and we, you know, with the approval of the engineer, we start when we need to start and then proceed accordingly, work my days back according to KDOT, how KDOT would do it, and, and move forward. Kind of the difference between your contracts and some of the others is they lift the calendar date to be complete, so, you know, especially going through the winter, you can't predict the weather, if it gets zero, you're not gonna pour a deck for a month, and so, no matter what date you put on it, you can't do it, and so generally, I'd like to put those dates out so that the traveling public, we're done before the travel, before anybody says we're done, and we look better and everybody's happy, or the choice is to put a short date on it and not quite make it, and then you have people wondering why you're not done when you said. So, there was a lot of flexibility in the contract time, didn't really have any idea what the plan was, or who wanted what when, and if it would've been in there, I should've done it, and so there again, I'm here to address any concerns, 'cause I assume, you know, it was the low bid, and I assume the concern's gotta be on something else, because otherwise this would, it's just, it's normal or typical that that would be awarded accordingly.
I totally understand your concerns, the start and stop dates that, that's left open-ended, it's my understanding from the county engineer who is no longer here, has retired, that they, he would also put that flexibility in there in an order to fit the contractor schedules, so that, hoping for a lower price.
A better bid, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, yeah.
So...
And there's some times when, well, we're doing the one out of Burma right now, that you got one that it done quick, that's, that's what was on the contract, and that's what we say at the end.
Right, and that's, that's totally understood.
Yeah, and so that's, that's why I'm here, I just wanted to address any concerns, questions on schedules, whatever, I'd be happy to answer, any whatsoever.
I do have one, and you could help, help me, 'cause you work in a lot of different counties.
Sure.
What, what is normal out there? Is, is there a typical contract that's...
Oh, it varies from county to county, but in general, they give you a list or a, okay, you got, you have between now and three months from now to start, start at your, start when you want, you got so many working days or calendar days to do the job, and that's how we bid it, and so there's, you know, the more flexibility you give in a schedule, of course, allows contractors to have more flexibility on when they can get there, so it has some effect on price at some point, but generally, that's how it is.
Okay.
Usually it's, you start between now and whatever, and then if there is some extraordinary circumstances, for instance, if there was a bridge that was going into a factory and the factory was shut down for four months, you know, at that point, they would put, maybe say, you gotta be done here.
Gotta be done.
This one you gotta be done.
Mm-hmm.
Of course, then, there might be a price difference on that too, but...
Sure.
Generally, for the most part, counties rely, allow a lot of flexibility, so they get the best price, 'cause that's what they're after.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yeah.
And, and I did pick up on one thing that you mentioned, that I know that we're not doing burs, and at least a, a completion date, and then that is, that's a, sounds like a pretty good idea to start with.
Well, it's, it's a good idea, except, you know, depending on when you start, of course, in the summer, you're gonna get more work done, because the weather's good.
Right.
Of course, you go into the winter, for instance, if you're gonna start in November or October, and you're gonna work through Christmas, you're working through, you know, January, February, your cold months, you can't pour concrete sometimes, and you get the holidays, so, you know, there's so much flexibility on days and stuff like that, it's just how you look at it, and there again, like I say, I've done this pretty much typically on every job I've ever done with you.
That's totally understood, so, all right.
I would, I would, as, one comment I would like to make, and, and it's not necessarily that we saw anything that was wrong with the contract, I, I think maybe I was the one that mentioned the table, it is just, our engineer had retired.
Yeah, and I, and I didn't even know that, thought I called Neil.
I know, and so, and so, when this contract came, and, and we just had questions, and there really wasn't anybody there to answer it, so it's not necessarily, I won't say anything like that, it's just, I was sitting there going, I, I'm not getting my questions answered.
Trust me, I was surprised everybody else, when I called and asked for Neil, and then I called Darren, Darren said, well, I recommended, but, you know, they have some questions, I said, well, I'll come up.
So, anyway.
Answer them.
Okay, thank you.
And, and thank you for coming up and sharing your concerns with us.
No problem.
All right, anyone else wish to speak?
I'm Mary Lou Reese with Reese Construction, and we're out here at 1240 West North Street in Slayne County. And my concern was that the bids, I mean, we, we go through a lot of processes with bidding, and certainly with KDOT, a bid that is, that is given without all the addendums acknowledged will be thrown out, and, and that's common, it is not required, but it's common for, and you all had an addendum on this because of traffic control, and L&M did not acknowledge that addendum, and we did, we were the second bidder, there wasn't a lot of difference between the two prices, there was some, we had actually talked to, we were, we, and also were surprised that Neil was retired, we had visited with him about the possibility, if we were low on the project, we would probably be submitting a little value engineering to try to get, because we, we think there's a, a design out there that would be a little more efficient cost-wise, and so we had planned to do that, and then when, when the low bid, which Kurt did have the low bid, when the low bid was, did not acknowledge the addendum, we thought we might have a shot at, at giving you guys that opportunity, so. Anyway, Mary Lou Reese, Reese Construction, thank you for letting me address you, I appreciate it, and I'm happy to take any questions, if you have any questions of me.
Questions from the commission?
Not this time.
We appreciate your concerns, and we're gonna take these things under consideration. I'm not gonna take any further public comment, this was, this portion of it was merely for the contractors, and so, sorry. At this stage, I will entertain comments from the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move we table RFA 174-18 for one week for further discussion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we table RFA 174-18 for another week for further discussion. Is there any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, so we're gonna table this for one more week, and we appreciate very much for your participation and your comments, they're gonna be taken to heart by both of you, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for listening.
You bet. Okay, now we're gonna move on to item number four.
Public hearing for Slayne County, Kip Sewer District and RFDs number one through seven, fiscal year 19 budgets, Andrew Manley, Assistant County Administrator, Director of Finance.
Good morning, Andrew.
Morning Commissioners. We've got a PowerPoint presentation, I handed out all those slides for you, I know our projector is a little dim these days, so I apologize for the rest of you in the room, if you would like to follow along, these trifolds are at the back of the room, you can pick one up, we'll be going through each line item as well, anyone online or watching at home this trifold, as well as the entire 2019 proposed budget can be found on the Slayne County website, under County Administrator. So, the introduction, the 2019 Slayne County annual budget provides the foundation, the direction of services that we provided the citizens of Slayne County throughout the budget year, the budget document presents the plan for how Slayne County will spend its resources to assure quality public services in 2019. So, some of the budget assumptions, these are pretty standard from year to year, the property taxes are primary source of revenue, funding sources for the, for county services, the county is still under the state mandated tax lid, inflation and increase in service demands push the need for an increase in budget authority, property tax delinquency rate has remained stable, and public safety continues to be the primary, or a primary component of the current budget, and will be a focus in the near future, as we go through this, the public should recognize many aspects of the budget growth are public safety-related. So, the 2019 anticipated financials, revenues, this was determined during the budget process, we determined revenues less the delinquency rate, we have a 4% delinquency rate in Slayne County, was $23,176,357. Again, through the budget process, we determined expenses or need for the county was $45,731,955. The resulting outcome or the need was $22,555,598. This resulting need is equivalent to the ad valorem taxes that we will need to collect for 2019. Again, 2018's need was $21,500,000, so this is roughly, or this is an increase of $1,013,994 taxes from 2018. The net delinquency rate of 4% was $902,224, so if you are calculating revenues on the pamphlet, that is how we got to the revenue number here, and expenses in general, fund expenses, plus special fund expenses, less the $966,000 of transfers, and an additional $350,000 in budgeted carryover is how we got to the expenses as well. So, the mil levy, this translates, the mil levy is a ratio between total taxes and total assessed values, it is a result or outcome of completing the budget process and determining county needs, so the 2019 assessed valuation is $587,572,722. New construction in Slayne County this year was $6,746,662, so the, again, the 2019 need, the ad valorem tax was the $22,555,598. I have the calculation there, which is the $22 million divided by the assessed valuation, that is how the county gets to the 38.388 mil rate for 2019, this is a 1.067 mil increase over 2018. Each mil is worth $587,000, the reason the county only needs the 1.067 mil increase is due to the new construction, the taxes on the new construction will generate roughly $425,000. So, how does this affect the public for a person who has a $100,000 home value, this will be a $12 increase in 2019, that's the entire year, $150,000 is $18, and $200,000 is a $24 increase. So, projected revenues, again, this is on the, the front page of this budget trifold, I'll go over each line item, the unencumbered funds consists of unencumbered funds needed for county liquidity and stabilization, reserve funds reserved for emergencies, these funds will be, while, excuse me, these funds while unencumbered, may still be earmarked for fu, for specific future activities, such as special bridge and special road funds. The Government Finance Officer Association recommends a, a 15% reserve account, Slayne County has a 13.3% reserve account, so in line with governmental recommendations, the ad valorem taxes, we've already talked about, local sales taxes, an increase in public spending in Slayne County, it's not necessarily an increase in the rate at which we tax, miscellaneous includes interest on idle funds, interlocal agreements, reimbursements, vehicle registrations, mortgage registrations, and others, the, the two restricted line items are funds set aside for future need, the CIP fund, or the Capital Improvement Plan, we will talk a little bit about later, and on the employee benefits, the county has a self-funded health insurance plan, this money is for insurance distributions, as well as an emergency fund for higher claim years. On the projected expenses, this would be the, on the inside of your trifold, we have two types of projected expenses, we have the general fund category, which is on the left field, and then on the right, if you flip it all the way open, is the special funds, right now, we'll talk about the general funds, the summary of expenses, Slayne County has increased by $1.69 million over 2018, this includes five new budgeted positions, all of these budget, all these new positions are public safety and law enforcement related. In addition, we have an expansion of our CIP program, which is an additional, the majority of that is an additional $600,000 allocation to future expo center upgrades, the Slayne County Jail has, also has $496,000 in identified projects in 2019, senior services is a new Department of Slayne County in 2008, excuse me, 2019, the $706,000 budgeted for 2019, it's, it's roughly a wash, what we're seeing here on the, on the general expenses is, there was nothing in 2018, which is kind of misleading, we had a distribution of the senior services of $328,000 in 2018, we are anticipating $338,000 in revenue in 2019, so that's where the other side of it is, so you're not seeing that on the expenses side, the net effect is a $40,000 in additional expense to the county. Lastly, staff raises, we, we issued a 2% across-the-board general raise for all employees, effective raises, including step increases, are between 2 and 8%. So, moving on to the special funds, again, this is on your right trifold, Roden Bridge had a slight increase in their equipment line item, we'll get to that in the Equipment Improvement Program, special parks and recreation, and special alcohol are lower due to a reduction in the amount of alcohol tax collected in the county, special, special bridge, which is the two-mil account, and the special road, which is the one-mil account, collected their respective mills, the 2019 budget includes carryover of unspent 2018, so that is why those numbers are a little bit higher than the one-mil or the two-mil, 'cause they did have some carryover, those are still earmarked for those two projects. The CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, accounts are funded, are funds specifically dedicated for instructur, infrastructure improvements, specific to their individual departments, so we have Slayne County CIP program, expo centers, noxious weeds, and health departments, so all four have their individual one. On appropriations, remained relatively unchanged, Central Kansas Mental Health Center had a slight increase, again, senior services, it was in 2018, but it's no longer in 2019, since that is a county department, and the other line items are, the North Central Flint Hills area on agency is again, a senior services aspect that we realized when they became a Department of Slayne County, we broke that out, we felt that was an appropriation, we've always paid that amount, it's just been in senior services budget, we broke it out to be an appropriation, so it's not a new appropriation. Distributions, so the ambulance and EMS that we distribute to the city of Salina had a slight increase, animal shelter, again, a slight increase, the transfers to EIP and CIP were, had some significant changes, the Sheriff's Department and the Equipment Improvement Program, Sheriff's, Sheriff's Office was awarded more in the EIP line item than in 2018, mainly to replace aging fleet, the 2019 budget is more in line with past yearly distributions, 2018 was just a, a lower year, the Capital Improvement Program was also expanded again in 2019 to account for future infrastructure improvements, again, the biggest change was the $600,000 for future expo center upgrades, yes?
Yeah. Andrew, I just, on that ambulance EMS, is that total budget there, I mean, of a million dollars, is that a, a per-call basis from the emergency management here in the ambulance service that we get from the local fire stations here in town?
There, there's a calculation the city of Salina will do, they'll have an anticipated budget, just like we're doing this process, and they'll go back and they'll analyze what it actually was compared to budget, and then we figure out what that number is, to hold them full and whole, so whatever, you know, whatever their expenses truly were, whatever their revenues truly were from, 'cause they, they do charge per call, so whatever those financials come in, Slayne County will make them whole, in addition to this, I believe there's a $200,000 ambulance line item for replacement of ambulances.
Okay, thank you. So, we really don't have a say in, in what that, what that, that charge is, it's, it's based on the prior year's usage, as far as whatever the city bills us for?
It's both, it's, it's prior year usage and it's a budget moving forward, so it's an anticipated number, but what we try to do is, is look back and make sure that those numbers are in line with what they actually set aside for in the budget, so we're, we're holding true trailing years to make sure that we're not overpaying them or underpaying them, or whatever it may be.
Great, thank you.
That's based on an interlocal agreement that's been in place for many, many years.
Okay. Thank you.
On economic development, the county continues to support and invest in economic development at a higher level than in 2018, the numbers are relatively unchanged, but we did have a slight increase to North Central Kansas Planning Commission, we are distributing $35,000 to the Chamber of Commerce, $20,000 to the Economic Development Organization, we have $50,000 to other economic development, and $5,000 to the Enterprise Zone.
The Chamber of Commerce for $35,000, I think $5,000 of that is for...
Milit...
Military affairs?
Yeah, that's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
I mean, you're tagged for military affairs?
Correct.
Okay.
Next is a chart that shows expenditures by function, that shows kind of how, how the county is, how these expenses are, are broken out, public services by far the biggest component, as well as public safety, those two make up the vast majority of Slayne County's budget, the rest are smaller, I guess you can say. And looking to the future, public service and public safety continue to be the primary focus of Slayne County, all new five budgeted positions are either a direct result or related to the jail population overcrowding, these include one new county attorney position due to increased caseload, two new inmate transport positions due to higher number of inmates housed out of county, and two new jail reduction positions aimed at analyzing and reducing the inmate population, Slayne County continues to look to the future and set aside funds now for large future projects. That is the conclusion, is there any questions?
Questions from Commissioners?
I'd like to say that's, that's a great layman's term presentation, it made it very understandable.
Thank you, agree. At this time, I'll open the floor for public comments regarding the budget.
Norman, I understand the need for taxes, but by raising my taxes, you're stifling economic development, I'm gonna have to renegotiate my purchase.
Understood.
If you look to the county to the south of us, every time I go to Wichita, go past in McPherson County, there's another building going up, what's going on here in Slayne County?
All right, Norman, thank you for your comments. Does anyone else wish to speak regarding the budget? Okay, we'll move on then to item number five.
Resolution number 18-2255, adoption of Rural Fire District number one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven, fiscal year 2019 budgets, Rita Deister, County Administrator.
Good morning, Rita.
Good morning. State law requires that whenever a, the Rural Fire District succeed the expenditures from 2018 above the Consumer Price Index, that you need to do a resolution approving this, their budget, and then following the vote today, then that vote will be published in this Salina Journal by statute, so...
All right, are there any questions of Rita? Public comment regarding this? Bring it back to the commission for possible action then.
Mr. Chairman, I move we sign Resolution 18-2255 and approve the fiscal year 2019 budget as published for RFDs one through seven as recommended by staff.
Second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 18-2255 for the adoption of Rural Fire Districts one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven for fiscal year 2019 budgets, is there any further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, we'll move along to item number six.
Adoption of Slayne County and Kip Sewer District fiscal year 2019 budget, Rita Deister, County Administrator.
The statute for the, for the county budget and for the Kip Sewer District is a little different than for Rural Fire Districts, we are under a tax lid, so you do not have to do a resolution as we had done in the past, we did come under, if you approve the budget today, we will come under the tax lid, so that's good, we are under the tax lid by $1,350, so we just kind of scooted through on that, but since following the public hearing, you need to approve the budget and sign, so that's where we're at at this point.
Questions? Comments? Public comment? Seeing none, this is rolling right along.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the published Kip Sewer District and Slayne County fiscal year 2019 budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the Slayne County and Kip Sewer District fiscal year 2019 budget. Further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, the budget has been adopted. All right, are there any further business to attend to or announcements? Alright, are there any further, uh, business to attend to or announcements? Alright, hearing none, I will take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we are adjourned. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, same sign. We will, uh, move on to, uh, meeting number two, need joining the meeting room after a short break. Thanks for everyone for attending.